Third study session, 23rd, 2020. Study session of the Chandler Unified School District Governing Board. Our first part of our study session, Amber Stoudt, who is Director of Research and Assessment, is going to present the proposed 2021 Journey 25 metrics for review and discussion. Amber?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam President, members of the Board. Today, I'm going to be discussing the Journey 2025 Board metric proposal for the current school year. For today's goals, I'm going to be discussing the measures that were directly impacted by COVID-19 and school closures, which included our AZM2 state assessment from last year, ACT, our International Baccalaureate Assessment, and our market share. In addition to the COVID, the measures impacted by COVID-19, I also want to discuss two adjustments to our measures from ACT Aspire and our CUSD Pipeline data. The first measure within our metrics is falls under Board Goal 1. And if you look at Board Goal 1D, we look at our overall AZM2 proficiency is at at least 60% for all of our subgroups. Within this, we're unable to report this measure for the current year. We typically use prior year state assessment data to report this measure due to the timing of when we received the data from the Arizona Department of Education. The recommendation is a one-year suspension because we will be able to collect this data for the upcoming 2022 year. You'll also notice a slight impact in Board Goal 1E, which is regarding our ACT exam. We'll still be able to collect that data, but there is an impact that we'll discuss later on in the presentation. We look at AZM2, our state exam, quite a bit throughout our measures. The next one is Board Goal 2A, which is grade level proficiency. We're looking at students at all grade levels will exceed the state in AZM2 scores in ELA and mathematics. Our students that are tested are grades three through eight and grade 10. Because testing was scheduled in the spring and school was closed, or we experienced school closure, this test was canceled. So we'll be unable to collect this data for the year. We're recommending a one-year suspension. So although we are unable to report this data using the state exam, we are looking at our students' performance by using benchmarks and formative assessments in the classroom to determine their proficiency in the content. We also see an impact in Board Goal 3A. This is using AZM2 data for third grade, and we're looking at being ready or proficient or highly proficient in ELA on the third grade reading test. We're unable to report this measure because the test was canceled. This Board Goal 3A, or Board Goal 3, is important because it's measuring third grade reading. So even though we were unable to report this data in our measures, we want you to know that we are tracking third grade reading with ATI Galileo benchmarks to determine that our students are mastering those third grade standards. Looking at our next impact is under Board Goal 4, which is career and college readiness. Board Goal 4F is not COVID-related, but it's about ACT Aspire. We did administer the ACT Aspire exam to all of our seventh graders to look at college and career readiness. It's a pre-test for the ACT exam that they would take their junior year. We stopped administering this exam in 2019, so we no longer have this data to report. So the recommendation is a permanent removal of this measure. At this time, I don't have a measure to replace that. We are experiencing a transition in all assessments in Arizona because all of the assessments are changing with the Arizona Department of Education. Once we are able to look at that, we'll be able to provide a meaningful recommendation for replacement in this measure. Still under Board Goal 4, we're looking at ACT. ACT was scheduled for April.
One moment. Mr. Evans, is that you?
Yes, and I'm on mute because it's very noisy.
Okay. Thank you so much. Amber is starting to go over the metrics, and she is right now looking at number four on the handouts.
Yep, 4G.
4G.
So we administer the ACT exam to all of our juniors because we participate in the menu of assessments. And within our board goals, we measure ourselves across, in comparison to other states that test 85% or more of their population, states like Utah, Nevada, Minnesota, and Oklahoma. Our juniors were scheduled to take this test in April, but due to school closures, ACT was canceled. We're excited that the Arizona Department of Education scheduled a makeup date for our students. So our seniors, senior class, have the opportunity to take this assessment on October 20th. We will be able to report this data. It's just going to be for our senior class rather than juniors in the spring. Same cohort, just a different time of year. This measure has four different subtests. You're going to see this impact in four different places. This one is math, and we're looking at the percent of students that receive a 22 or higher. And that's because the 22 indicates that college and career readiness benchmark. The next one is Board Goal 4H, and that's looking at our English subtest score. We're looking for the percent of students that meet that college readiness benchmark, which is an 18 or higher, in comparison to states that test 85% or more of their population. Now, in previous years, we've been ranked number one. We've outperformed all of those states. Where we will be reporting this data, it's just the test date was moved to October. Still looking at ACT, the next one is Board Goal 4I with reading. We're looking at the percent of students that receive a 22 or higher in comparison to the states that test 85% or more of their population. Again, we'll be able to report it. We just want you to be aware that it's our senior class that's taking this test. And then the last one is science for ACT. We're looking at the percent of students that meet a 23 or higher in comparison to states that were 85%, that test 85% or more of their population. In previous years, we've been ranked number two. Minnesota beat us out that current year in 2019. We will be reporting this, but again, it'll be our senior class that's taking this assessment on October 20th. I do want you to know that a junior class is scheduled to take this test as well in the spring, but we wanted our students to experience the makeup opportunities so that they have a chance to take a free college entrance exam that they can use for entrance into colleges.
Question for you on that.
Yes.
So we'll be using the senior data for this year. Will we be then, if the juniors are taking it in the spring, that will not be available then until the fall? So we'll use that for next year's metrics?
That's correct. So for this current year, we're going to use, we will be using the senior data from October 20th. And then for school year 2021, 2022, we'll use the junior data that we will have in the spring. We typically don't receive that data until junior July, so we're unable to report it in the current year. This also allows us to receive the state reports from other states to see how they performed. Typically, we don't get those until October of the following year. Okay. We're still in Board Goal 4, and our next impact is 4K, which is International Baccalaureate. And this is our IB testing. During school closures, IB decided to cancel their spring tests, so we are unable to collect this data for the current year. We always report back a prior year. In looking at their schedules, it does seem that they will be having exams in the spring. So we are recommending just a one-year suspension for this measure, and we'll be able to report back the following year. This is some great news that we have for Board Goal 4N. This is our pipeline data when looking at our coursework for post-secondary with our students at the university level. We came to you in the spring of 2019 to communicate that the Arizona Department of Education was no longer maintaining that portal where we had access to that data. You challenged us to find another way to have access to that data because it was so important to see how our students were doing in post-secondary. After several meetings with the Arizona Board of Regents, we've created a partnership, and we're happy to report that we now have access to that data regardless of the ADE portal, and this measure will be reported for the upcoming year.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Evans?
Yay! Amber, thank you. That is fantastic news because that's how we measure how we're doing. So thank you so much because I was persistent in being a pain in getting that information, and you delivered. So I really, really appreciate it.
I have to tell you, I appreciate you challenging us because we've had great conversations with the Arizona Board of Regents. We've been able to create a partnership and access to other post-secondary reports. So this really has been a great achievement for Chandler in being able to see how our students are doing. So thank you for being persistent with that measure.
Ms. Love? Oh, Mr. Evans, were you done?
Yes, thank you. I just, well, no, no, I'm not done. Amber, thank you again because that was just a huge lift that you had to deal with, and I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Now I'm done.
Great. Ms. Love, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I have a question about something earlier, but I was going to wait till the end of the presentation to ask. But regarding this one with the partnership with the Arizona Board of Regents, is that just with CUSD, or do they have partnerships with other districts out of curiosity?
When having our initial conversations, most of their work is with post-secondary. So they were excited to have conversations with the district, and they may be working with others because they've now partnered with ASU and Mr. O'Reilly because they do want to engage with districts to see what types of reports we're looking for. So we do feel like we've pioneered that partnership, and they were excited to hear from us.
And if they don't partner, like for whatever reason, they don't partner with other districts, how would that impact how we're kind of like matching things up between like other districts, I guess?
So for this particular measure, what we're looking for are our students going into college credit-bearing courses right away in English and math. So our goal with this is that when they leave Chandler, they're not entering into a remedial course where they can't receive credit and they need to have that intervention. We want them to go into English and math courses right away, being able to receive that credit. So it doesn't impact this measure directly. However, we can have conversations to see if they can do some comparisons with other districts. We're just in the early stages of those conversations.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, like, because I think that would be helpful too. You know, if we're really shooting to be the best district, you know, how do we compare in terms of those things between other districts in the state? But I guess like, this is a major pioneer, so I guess it's like new. So that's just all I wanted to know if that was the plan in the future.
It's perfect timing because we have a meeting with them next week to give more feedback on their reporting, so I'm happy to bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, can I jump back in again?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Love, this is Dave again. And one of the, one of the big things, I'm on an advisory committee with, for student persistence through the community college district through Maricopa. And one of the biggest indicators of whether students will be successful is whether they end up in remedial class. If they end up in one remedial class, the chance, the likelihood that they'll actually complete an associate's degree drops down to under 50%. But if they're in two remedial classes, then the, the, the number, the percentage of students who actually complete that associate's and then go on to a four-year university is 12%. Now, with students of color, that number drops in half. So it was really important that we begin having conversations with the community colleges and with the four-year colleges to look at what we can do with these numbers in order to make sure that our, to begin to breed success for our students as they approach community college or a four-year, and what we can do to actually make changes or adjust our education so that students are really prepared to...
I didn't know if he was done. Thank you for that clarification. I think like, just my concern is like, it's helpful to kind of know how other districts or other children from other districts are kind of measuring up in this era, area, especially if we're trying to collaborate with other districts to see, you know, what are they doing that we're not doing? That's just kind of like my thought on it.
I'd be happy to facilitate those conversations as we move forward with our meetings.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Brunner?
Just to follow up, so I'm assuming though, they could collect the data on all their students, you know, all the students, and I would guess 99% are coming from Arizona districts, right?
Yeah.
Not a lot of people are probably moving here to go to Maricopa community colleges. So I'm just wondering if that might satisfy our need to compare, if we could look at their whole average? Are they allowing us to do that, or?
Yes, they are. They supplied our data to us initially when we were looking. So just to give you an idea, and we didn't have this data when we did an end-of-year report in June, but based on the data from last year, 75% of our students received college credit. They went right into an ELA or math course, so we would have been a four on this measure. When we continue to look at those reports, we can ask for a way for us to take a look at overall in Arizona, a comparison of those numbers. Absolutely. Yeah. I think it's just a matter of helping them. They've been very open in conversations of what would you like, what would you like this to look like? And we've been able to provide that feedback to them, and they've been very open to that feedback. We're so grateful for this partnership. So these are great things that I can bring back to them to see if we can, we can answer some of those questions. Okay? Okay. I'm going to keep going. The next one, we're moving away from Board Goal 4 and going over to Board Goal 7, and this is centered around market share and really looking at our student charter mobility rate. So the recommendation is for a one-year-only adjustment on this mobility rate. Typically, we have it below 2%. The recommendation right now is below 4%. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to bring to our attention just so we can understand why that recommendation's here. Our current mobility rate for this year is at 1.31%. So mobility in Chandler, our students have engaged with us in learning and then withdrew to go to a charter school. Just to give you an idea of what that percentage looks like, last year, over the course of 180 days, our mobility rate was at 1.16%. And your mobility rate can only increase. It can't decrease throughout the year, right? Once a student's mobile, they're mobile. So we're, we know that a lot of this mobility was caused due to COVID-19 and school closures. So we're requesting or recommending the adjustment for this current year be below 4%. Most mobility, when we're looking at prior years, happens at the end of a grading period. So every nine weeks, that's when we see those transitions. We haven't reached a grading period yet. So as of September, we were at 1.31%. So we're looking at a one-year adjustment for this measure.
Can I just ask for clarification too? So let's say someone decides to come back in January, that can't negate that they left and then came back, or how does that work?
Correct. They're still mobile. So they still, they still chose to attend a charter school during that time, so we would consider them a mobile student throughout that year. Okay, and there's one measure that's not in your packet, but we've been doing some analysis, so I want to bring it to your attention. And that's centered around advanced placement testing. So I'm going to have you look at Board Goal 4D, and that's the number of advanced placement tests that we administer. And we're just beginning this analysis, so I apologize that it wasn't in the presentation. And there are two things that we're looking at that really are COVID-related to this. The first one being that we report this based off prior year data. And last year in the spring for advanced placement, College Board decided not to cancel their tests. They moved all of their testing online, but students had the opportunity to cancel without a fee. So in looking at that, students tested at home if, after we were closed. Their testing was in May, and they had the opportunity to test at home with their computer. We know that the number of exams that were administered has dropped from that time, that we had a decrease in testing. One, because there wasn't a fee, and that they were at home in distance learning. The second portion of that is looking at AP and College Board and what they're going to do in spring of 2021. They are currently scheduled to do all of their testing in person. They're going back to their typical experience where they test in a classroom. However, we know that we have families that are concerned with COVID and that may not come to a campus to attend an AP test, a testing experience. So we do think there's going to be an impact. I don't have a recommendation of where that would land tonight. We're still doing our analysis this week. However, I do plan to have a recommendation the next time we have conversations about this proposal. But I did want to bring that to your attention as we were looking at it. Okay, so just to review the measures that we were taking a look at, measures that were impacted by COVID-19 were our state exams for AZM2. We're looking at a suspension for a one-year only. Just a reminder that our ACT exam data will be from October 20th in our seniors' testing. Again, we do anticipate some students may not come to campus to test for that experience. Our IB testing, we're looking at a one-year suspension because it was canceled in the spring, and then an adjustment to our market share, which is our student mobility rate. In addition to that, we have our ACT Aspire, which we're looking at a permanent removal because we no longer administer that exam. And then the exciting news that the CUSD Pipeline data is back and available for reporting for the current year. Do I have any questions?
Thank you so much, Amber. I really appreciate it. I think Ms. Love said that she had some additional questions, so why don't we start with her?
It was just one, and I don't know if you are the appropriate person to ask this, but I was just wondering why the ADE chose to reschedule the ACT for October 20th, especially because they start back in October? So it just kind of feels like an odd time to start as they are getting adjusted to being back in person.
That's a great question. And that was actually chosen by our district. So the, under the menu of assessment option, the state provided three testing dates. The first testing date was September 22nd, which we're not in school for. The next testing date is October 6th, which is, falls on our fall break. And the last testing date was October 20th. So those were the only three dates that were available for this reset, or for the makeup. So we chose the one where our students were, could potentially be back in session. We had to make this decision in August, so we were trying to give enough time for things to maybe look better health-wise. So that was, that was really our only option, to at least provide that opportunity for students, because we had many calls over the course of the last six months of if they were going to have that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that we chose the later option. It was just kind of, it was an odd choice when I heard it, but it sounds like that's more of like an ADE issue in terms of giving those testing ranges. So thank you for clarifying that.
No, I appreciate that question. I'm sorry I didn't bring that up sooner. So thank you.
Mrs. Brunner, did you have some additional questions?
I have a couple. Yeah. So relating back to the ACT for one minute, will the number of students who take the ACT change? Because we're looking at percentage of students, and so if we're going from like a planned one to here's a makeup one, I'm guessing we're going to have fewer students? Is that expected?
We are expecting to have fewer students, but we're really not looking at an end count or the total number of students testing. We're looking at the percent of students that meet that benchmark. So if we've opened that up and we're encouraging all of our seniors to come to testing, but really, we're looking at whoever attends, did you meet that benchmark in comparison to this?
I'm just throwing that out there because it might make the data a little wonky if, you know, there's a certain subgroup that tends to test more this time than another subgroup, whatever that subgroup might be, I don't know.
And that's tough with, until we do, until we have the test date and we're able to run that analysis. But right now, we would just like to encourage students to attend and then be able to analyze with, across the states. The nice part is that every state's in our boat with ACT, and so we're really not unique in experiencing this pandemic alone. But you're right, the end count or the total number of students that will attend is likely to decrease.
Okay. And then the alternative measures that we might be using, how do they compare to the original measures that we had? Are they highly correlated? Or, you know, sometimes a test emphasizes one aspect of reading, maybe more, you know, fluency or whatever, you know, decoding or something versus comprehension? I was just curious what, if there was any, like, substantial differences?
Yeah. There's two parts to that. So the, the beauty in why our state assessment is within our measures is because we can compare ourselves to the entire state. And we lose that opportunity when we use formative assessments or district testing. So our best option would really be ATI Galileo, and that's been something that we've utilized for the last six years. And they correlate pretty closely with AZM2 scores. They get the results, and then they determine the risk level for their students. Is it perfect? No. But it gives teachers instructional information on students that really AZM2 misses. So AZM2, formerly AZAMeric, used to be inform teaching was the acronym. They took that off because they knew the data didn't really inform teaching at all. With ATI Galileo, it goes down to the standard level for, for teachers, and they have the ability to follow up with formative assessments on that standard. So while it's not a perfect, and that's why I didn't recommend a replacement on this, because we don't, we lose the ability to compare ourselves to our peers, we are at least, we at least have information for teachers and families to determine what students are knowing as they go through this time without that data.
And then, I guess, what are the experts expecting to happen to achievement data across the country, across probably the globe?
Yeah.
Long-term, like, should we be revisiting these goals for next year? That we really should have different expectations compared, not just pulling it out of thin air, but, you know, that, what is expected by the experts to happen?
That's a great question. So we have this unique situation of we, we're in a pandemic. It's been very clear that state assessment is going to occur in the spring, right? Or that the ability to have that. So we know that that data is going to be collected, but really, there's going to be a lot of analysis after that to determine what the differences were, you know, if growth is really going to be as high or proficiency is going to be as high as it is. We really won't have that information until we collect the data on students. Arizona's even in a different situation because we're now transitioning to new assessments. So I was on the committee for request for purchase for the new state exam for grades three through eight and the college entrance exam for high school, and we're going to experience that shift as well. They're completing some field tests as we move forward. I think that our best course of action is to really let our students demonstrate their knowledge that they can, and then we take a look. And we'll bring recommendations if we see that there's a major adjustment.
Okay. So I guess I was just asking, like, are we just keeping it relative to the other kids in the state and looking at the data relative? So if all kids were probably at least somewhat similarly impacted by how much in-person instruction they had versus virtual?
Exactly. So if you think Board Goal 2 is really just exceeding the state on ELA and math in that state exam, and quite honestly, we should be exceeding the state, right? We've all gone through this experience, and we, we've exceeded the state before. We should continue to exceed the state. There may be an adjustment in third grade reading because we've set the bar at 61% with proficiency, but I'd like the opportunity for our third grade teachers to continue to work with our students and our third grade, our third grade students demonstrate their knowledge, and then we'll be able to see if we need to make an adjustment after that. Does that make sense? I don't really want to set a bar when I don't really know where to set the bar.
I guess that's just what I was asking, is there any research out there, predictions that are reliable from experts that, you know, look, have looked at other impacts before, students maybe who were, you know, in and out of school and using that data to look at and see how that could possibly affect? But it sounds like there isn't.
I think in this pandemic, a lot of research is currently happening, and so I don't know anything that would be directly related to what we're experiencing today.
Thanks.
Mr. Evans, did you have any questions? He may have dropped off the bridge, so...
No, thank you. No, I'm good.
Okay, good. Do you have questions?
Oh, no, no, thank you. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. So Amber, as we, I also, I do notice that we are still utilizing the ATI Galileo pre-assessment, post-assessment type data for our grade level proficiency for the third graders as identified in 2B, and then also for 3B.
Correct.
So that we can end up, although that is going to have a little bit more of an impact on the metrics due to the fact that it has now increased its weight for this year.
Correct.
In that particular metric. So our ATI Galileo data is going to be extremely important.
Correct.
I also think in, in... I also think, in, in comment to Mrs. Brunner's question, I think that because this whole pandemic situation is evolving and we're not at the end of it yet, by any means. And I think that it's probably going to take several years to really determine what the impact on students has been. Because it's, it's not something I think that, that they're going to be able to figure out right away. And so I guess my comment is that we, we do the best that we, we possibly can at this point to continue to provide those, the services and the education to our students so that we make sure that those, those gaps are identified in their learning and that we address those issues to continue to move them forward each and every day. So there was also, I guess, one other, I wanted to make comment, I guess. And that's on, on market share. And I, I'm struggling a little bit with this one because I, I'm seeing that so many, it's not just our district in which there's become a tremendous amount of mobility. I'm, I'm hearing this from various other school districts across the state. The, the reasons are extremely varied at this point as to why individuals have either chosen to homeschool, go to a charter school, move, move away, basically based on their needs. I guess some of the, I don't know, I'm, I'm, we're doubling. We're doubling our, our mobility rate. And I realize that we're only looking at this for one year. But I, I really think that it's a testament to our, our staff and our programming and our choices at the school district as to whether students and families stay here or not. And this is why I'm conflicted because I, I would really like to be able to see this, I guess, the true impact of, of where it is. Because it takes all of our staff members and, and board members and the community staying in the school and, and to reduce that mobility. And I think that, I, I really don't want to give people a pass to, to say, well, let's, you know, let's just give up. We want, we want the students to stay in our schools. And I, I feel like lowering the bar to that is going to impact us in different ways. And I feel as though maybe, maybe we shouldn't change it, is my kind of a feeling. And then it will really, it will, I hope, have people within the district, because we're all vested in this, to highlight the reasons why people are, are leaving or decide to, to move somewhere else compared to just moving out of state and, and going, you know, some, to another state to live and that's why their child is leaving. But I, I think, I guess I'm not making it real clear, but I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this one to, to lower the bar on it. Because I think that we should still, even during the pandemic, expect continuous improvement.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that comment. I think what we need to focus on with the mobility rate is this is specifically, these families are picking charter schools. So it's not leaving to another state. They're picking charter schools in Arizona to attend. And you're right, it is an effort that we all try and retain our students, right, and our families and that they continue to choose Chandler. We're just in such a unique situation with this current pandemic of, did we really have the opportunity to retain these students if they had to make other choices during their time regardless of their personal experiences? But I, do you, do you, are you open to a different recommendation or are you looking at just 2%?
As I say, I'm struggling with it. And I'm not, I, I really need to think about it a little bit more. I've been going over it, actually since this weekend when I, when I looked at the, looked at the packet. And, and some days I, I think, well, maybe yes, some days maybe no. So I don't know if a, a compromise, maybe halfway between would be a little better. But I feel like maybe the 4% would be a gimme kind of situation. And I would really like to still be able to challenge our staff to retain our students. And I, I guess I, my gut feeling is that the 4% is probably not a real challenging situation.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that feedback. Okay, that, that helps me kind of.
I don't know if anyone else is feeling the same way or not, but if there's any other, if anybody else would like to weigh in, please do. Dr. Castile?
Amber, when you were discussing this with me, based on where we are now and where we've been in the past, what would you suspect it would be by the end of the year?
So that's, and I, I do have a chart. Can I pull a chart up? Do you mind if we're looking at trends? I think I plugged it in here just in case. So if we're looking at kind of where we've been and where we are, here's trends throughout the year, right? And so in every year of seven, 2000, school year 18, 19, and then even last year, we had a full 180 days of student mobility. And the counts that you see right there are the number of students that engaged in learning with us and then chose, chose to attend a charter school after. And so when we're looking already, I'm, I'm nervous because we haven't completed a quarter one. And we're already seeing significant mobility in comparison to something that took us an entire year the following time. So taking that number out, knowing that we haven't even ended a grading period yet, I do, this, this can only, we know choice occurs throughout the year, right? Even in a typical year, 553 students started with us and went somewhere else. And while that seems low, because that's a 1.16, that's below that 2%, we've already exceeded that. And we haven't really, we just started really engaging in, in person and having those connections with students outside of health choices that they're having to make, you know, for their, for their families. I don't think it's something we can disregard. I think it's something we at least need to highlight for this year because a lot of these choices that were made may not have had to do with Chandler. And it may really had to have done with a personal situation or something within the So I think it's, it's something I wanted to bring up to the board because I think it's something that is worth having conversations about. When we were looking at this analysis, we, we lose a lot after the first semester, you know, of that winter break, they'll, they'll transition over. I do expect this to increase. It's not going to get better. Mobility doesn't get ready, better. Once a student's mobile, they're mobile. That's, that's where I'm at with it. Sorry, I don't have more information on that. But I, I understand and I hear that maybe 4% is too high.
Do we have an idea from years past at various marker points in the, in the year? Do we have an idea as to where that, where the mobility, or what are, the mobility rate was at those various markers in previous years? I don't know if it's, you know, constantly tracked or we can look at that in the past to see where, let's say on the, at the end of this quarter, which is a week, a week from Friday. Once we get back into, coming back to school in October, where we perhaps compare at that point compared to years past? And be able to see whether there is any type of a, I, I realize it's only going to be one data point that we can see perhaps a delta in the differences between the averages from years past and, and this year. But it may kind of give us a better idea as to where to project out.
Okay. I'm happy to do that at each marker for the last couple of years at each quarter. So we can get an idea of where the variance is, and then have, see if that's where we want to, looking to anticipate the number of students, right, that may continue or that may start to be mobile. We can take a look at that and see if there's a, a measure we're more comfortable with.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Can I ask one more question? So I guess my opinion on this is that this measure is now measuring something much more complicated and very different than it's ever measured before, that we're never going to be able to isolate variables out from. So in some ways, it's less meaningful this year because we can't draw the conclusions we normally would draw from this. Like you said, because it could be because people wanted to, their children to go back in person immediately. And then, you know, the people we lost to online programs that had been in, developed over years, where, you know, our elementary one had just started. When we had people who, you know, there were multiple reasons for what was happening. And so I guess I'm asking, what would this data even tell us? How relevant is it? And should we maybe start once we're all back in session in person? Although we may, you know, who knows what's going to happen with, you know, the red, yellow, green zones, right? To maybe look at that? Because then at least we're looking at, okay, once we're back to semi-normal, now we can kind of have like a base from which to work from there. I don't, I don't know.
So what I'm hearing you say is maybe start when we're full K-12 in-person? And then start tracking the withdrawals from that date? That's something that we can look at. I, I don't think it's a measure we can completely disregard this year because we are in this for market share. We want to retain our kids.
Right, no, I'm not saying that the idea behind it isn't valuable. I'm just saying this year, it isn't telling us what it usually tells us. It tells us a whole bunch more.
Probably not.
A lot more variables thrown in there this year, yeah.
You know, Mrs. Brunner, I hadn't thought of it from that perspective, but you're absolutely right. We've grown, gosh, in the last 10 years of having the, the metrics, I mean, we're up to 24 charter schools. And it's, was a goal to retain our market share and not lose enrollment. And as you know, we've had continuous growth and improved our customer service, our student achievement. So, you know, I hadn't thought about the, tracking the loss of students could be a whole, the variables are very different this year than they have been in the past. So maybe we need to rethink that and get Craig and Frank and Larry to all weigh in on what is it that we're really trying to do here and measure? To be fair to the staff since we're evaluating our performance or their performance.
And this school does sit by, so it's not a bucket of goals, right? So whatever we score on this, this is what Board Goal 7 would look like for the, for the overall score when we're doing that. But that's another consideration. We can start when we're in-person and look at those numbers. Another possibility is we can track and then come back in the spring to determine what their best option would be. We, you know, our office can track the different variations and then look at the overall impact because, like it was stated earlier, we're not at the end of this, even though we may be returning to in-person, COVID-19 is not going away. And we may see some transitions throughout the school year. So that's, that's another option that we can take a look at it and maybe revisit in the spring.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Mr. Evans?
No, good discussion though. That's, that's actually Laura's point was very helpful because there is change. There is, there's going to be a flux for a while. So what is it? I, I agree. Thank you.
All right, thank.
Oh, sorry. So in coming back to this, should, should we continue to have conversations of leaving it at 2% and then possibly looking at it in the spring to make it an adjustment? We've done that, we did that last year, right? When COVID-19 hit, is that something that we're interested in?
I think we need more data. I mean, and so I would say at this point, if we are planning on, if this is coming back to the board for adjustment anyway at the, at the next meeting, which is, I believe, on the, on our agendas, that we perhaps leave it with the intent of coming, after we have more data and you guys have some conversations with some of the administrators, let's come back and revisit it after the first of the year.
That's perfect. All right, we'll make sure to have that.
I think, I think that probably would be a good thing.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think we'll go ahead and get started on our second part of our study session. And Dr. Gilbert, tonight will be presenting several proposed boundary options for the new high school on Gilbert Road. Dr. Gilbert?
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to take this time to share with you the secondary high school and the new CUSD 9 through 12 high school recommended boundary changes. The new school, I wanted to put some pictures in here because the last time I presented this information to you, there, we did not have walls. So I wanted to at least give you some pictures of where the school, the school is. This school is located on Gilbert, Gilbert Road between Ocatillo and Chandler Heights, right off of Brooks Farm. Wanted to at least let you see the progress that has occurred up to this point. You'll see that this is the front of the school as it faces Brooks Farm. This is the, looking to the east as you look at the, above a view of the campus. And then you'll see, looking to the west, and you'll see that the fields are, are moving along in the sense of growth. And they normally start with the fields because if I remember correctly, they like to have at least one growing season in the time the school opens and they're on the fields. I also would like to just take a moment because as I give this presentation, I also have Mr. Rob Bickus, who will be also sharing a little bit toward the end of this presentation, who is the principal of the Arizona College Prep Erie Campus currently. We have also Myron Blueford, who is also a teacher on campus, and Tris Scoff, right? That are, there are teachers on campus that are here just in case if there are some questions that you may have for them as well. So I wanted to at least share that information. So as we, as we go through this presentation, you have seen this presentation before. I know it has been some time, so I will cover the presentation, but I will move over some of the areas a little quicker because you have seen this presentation. But because of the pandemic, it has been some time since we've talked about this because we've been doing some other things. So with that being said, I would like to bring us back to the goals that we use to, to make these decisions that we're bringing to you today and, and as it relates to the boundaries. One of our goals was to establish long-term boundary adjustments for all of our high schools. As we're entering in, we are still growing, but we are coming to the end of that. So we have to make sure as we're looking at changing boundaries, what, what are we going to do to make sure that this is something that we can, we can put in place and is going to last us? Maximizing existing resources as a goal. Relieve the increased projected enrollment at Hamilton and Perry High School because that's where the, the largest growth is, is occurring. Develop the new 9 through 12th grade high school boundaries to keep the enrollment between 1,500 and 2,000. We, we call this a small high school. Others call this a normal size. Ensure the least amount of disruption for students and families. And finally, broaden ACP Erie's model of success to more students. I think it's also important to note that within CUSD, about 30% of our secondary students are opened and enrolled to a school that is not their boundaried school. So when we look at boundaries within CUSD, it's more of, we're looking at attendance boundaries, but it's really transportation boundaries. Where do you, where do you live and the transportation so that you can get to your school? With that being said, again, I initially started these presentations and I presented to the governing board. The first meeting was on January 8th of 2020. Soon after that, we had three community meetings. One, January 13th at Perry High School, January 16th at Hamilton High School, and then January 21st at Arizona College Prep Erie Campus. We are now at the governing board today, or I will be as an information item later in the board meeting as a recommendation, and then looking to come back to the board on October 14th to ask for approval. So as we look at the secondary high school and new high school boundaries, the proposed boundary changes would take effect beginning in the 2021, 22 school year, which would be next year. The new 912 high school would open with grades nine through 12. The boundary changes would begin with current eighth graders, eighth grade students in the boundaries that would be approved. Boundaries for current 9 through 12th grade students at Hamilton and Perry high schools would not change in any of the options presented. So all of the current 9 through 12th grade students in Perry and, and Hamilton would not change. They would continue at the school they're in with transportation and so forth. And finally, ACP Erie, current 9 through 11th And finally, ACP Erie, current 9th through 11th grade students would move to the new high school if approved in the recommendation that, that I share. Current eighth graders in the new boundaries would move as ninth graders to the new school. So when we look at the current high school boundaries, if we start from the top on the left, you will see that in the light blue, this is Chandler High School's boundaries. Moving to, oh, here we got my arrow here. Here we have Hamilton's boundaries. The dark blue is Perry High School's boundaries. Green is Basha's boundaries, and then we see Castile's boundaries in the gold. You will see that the, the high schools are circled, so you can see where their boundaries are. This location here, which is in the square mile of GG, which is Gilbert between Ocatillo and Chandler Heights, is where the new school is located. And then you'll see up in the light blue next to Chandler High is ACP Erie, which is an open enrolled school, not, not having specific boundaries. As we look at the, as we look at the, what we're deciding on and what we're looking at, it's important to note that down here at the bottom in HA, HB, IA, IBIC, this is Sun Lakes Community. So these aren't square miles that students are attending our schools, as well as if you look at this square mile, which is the Springfield Community. I think it's also important to note when we're looking at where students are coming from, when we see EE and EF square miles here, this is the airport. One of the questions that came up in previous board meetings was what does it look, what does the overlay look like for the junior high boundaries and the high school boundaries? Now you'll see these colors on this map denote the, the junior highs. So you'll see here in the, the yellow or gold is Anderson Junior High. The light blue is Willis. Bogal is the orange. Santan is the green. The, with the pink hue is Payne, and then you have Castile in the, in the light blue. You'll see that you still have the high schools denoted by their, the school being circled, and you'll see the hard lines that show the boundaries for the high school in comparison to where the junior highs are. So when we look at the projected high school enrollment, these projections were from the COSD Applied Economic Study Report that was done by an outside organization, and it was completed in 2019, 2020. It looks at the future development that, that's within our district, and it looks at trends to determine where the growth would be in order for us to look at how many students we have. When I'm talking about the growth in, in the high school, it's important to note that when they do the, the demographics to see where the growth is, they're looking for what that would look like K-12. I'm focusing on what students would actually be coming from the high school perspective when I'm talking numbers. So one, the strong projected growth in high school enrollment is expected over the next 10 years, particularly during the next five, as I mentioned. Increased projections for every attendance area ranging from 300 to 700 students in each. Total 9th through 12 enrollment projections is to grow by 2,600 students by 23, 24, and an additional growth of 900 by 28, 29. So you'll see the district is continuing to grow. Initially, when this study was done a few years ago, the peak of the growth was supposed to be 2021. But as you know, within our district, we've continued to grow as we've moved forward. I mentioned before, the largest growth will occur in Hamilton and in the Perry boundaries. I think it's important to, to note because there have been some questions on whether we're still growing with the situation and the pandemic that we're in. This trend of us, of COSD growing remains. It's evident by the growth we had last year of 986 students in grade 7 through 12. And I think it has shown that in the high school this year, we are still growing. We've grown by 500 students in the 912. So the numbers that I will show, even though that I focused on last year's number, and I'll, I'll share why, it's important to note that even with the situation that we're in, 9th through 12th grade has grown by 500 students. Finally, we have families that may move, whether it's in elementary or junior high, but we see our students come back for our high schools, and that trend has, has continued to show. So again, when we look at the 2019, 2020 enrollment, I used these numbers, and I denote this down at the bottom of the slide, which I think is important because student data for the 1920 has been utilized as students that are currently in the, in online with the students that have moved from COA won't reflect the accurate numbers of students that would be at our school. So when you look at the numbers here of what we were currently in, in 1920, you can see the size of the schools with Basha and Castile also having either Basha being 6, 7, 8, and Castile being 7, 8. So those numbers were drawn out so that you can see what the 9th through 12th grade enrollment You've seen this slide, it really gives you the schools on the left and then the growth or the projected or the enrollment, I'm sorry, from over the last three years. And then we get into the building capacity, which is, becomes real important as we're looking at how are we addressing boundaries and, and students? You'll see the square footage of each building. So for example, if we look at Basha, you will see there's 300,000 square feet to, to round. SFB, which is School Facilities Board, they make a determination of what is the capacity of each building. So that's where you'll see, for example, Basha's capacity is 3,487 students. What's real important to note though is when they look at the capacity of a building, they look at all of the capacity. Which, for us, it's cafeterias and hallways, areas that aren't going to be spaces that you're going to be, which I hope we aren't going to be teaching in from that perspective. And so with that being said, you usually have to take off about 15 to 20% because of the hallways and other areas that you aren't going to use. And when you do that and look at the percent capacity on the far right, you will see that there is not a lot of space available in, in our schools based on the number of students that we have. So when you look at the numbers, the amount of space we have, and you look at the growth that is coming, I think it's real important to, to look at those numbers. When we look at the new 9th to 12th high school programming, important, it's, it is going to be a comprehensive high school, just like the other high schools that we have in the, in our district, in the sense of what they have to offer. The academic emphasis will be on college and career prep, on level and accelerated core areas, sort of math, English, science, social studies. It have advanced placement classes. Dual enrollment credit, electives such as your PE, your art, drama, et cetera. I think with the, with the new facilities, with the performing arts center, with the gymnasiums, with the field space, you will be able to address these electives as well as, as other activities. With the recommendation that will, that I will share, continued current rigorous academic programming of on-level and acceleration will continue. Four-year college and career action plans, or with the E-CAP, will consist of developing individualized learning plan for each student. Student enrollment will be based on the approved boundaries that the, the board approves and, and open enrollment. And then the question that has come up time, and that is school uniforms. And this has not been determined at this time, and I'll share some more information on that with how that could occur as you will see that my recommendation, well, my recommendation Again, fine arts, band and music. And when we look at the facility that is being constructed at this time, it will have a full complement of these buildings as well as athletic fields for complement of athletic programs. I will say it does not have a swimming pool because that does come up, but we would determine where that location would be, similar to some of our other schools currently. Career and technical education programs would be available, or CTE. Access to East Valley Institute of Technology, which is the EBIT program, and student clubs and organizations will also be found on this campus. Again, I think when we look at this new school, because again, we're looking at boundaries as a whole for the district, but we're also looking at the boundaries and what the programming would be at the new school, it will have the amenities that all of our other high schools have. So when we look at the proposed boundaries, I presented these before, so I'm not going to labor and tense on these, but at least just share a few things on, on each one. With the boundaries, the, the first boundaries that I, I'm going to present, the first options directly affect the new, the new 9th through 12th school. Then we get into a couple of options that really focuses in on Perry High School boundary moving to Basha to address growth, as well as Hamilton High School boundaries moving to Chandler to address the growth at those schools that they would be coming from. So when we start with the boundary options and we look at boundary A1, this option requires students to be moved to and from the majority of the COSD high schools. So you would have this square mile, which is CD, moving to Chandler. These two square miles moving to Perry. And they would need to move to Perry if we moved these square miles, sorry, if we moved these square miles to the new school, and then these two square miles from Hamilton to Basha. So this was an example of A1 as an option, and of A1 through A4, this is the only option that does not include moving ACP to the new school. This, there is, there would be some disruption when you look at the number of moves that would be from, from the different boundaries. And the school would be, after four years of the boundary movement, would only give you probably about 1,000 students in the enrollment. We have A2. A2 gives you moving ACP Erie and square miles GF and GG, which are the, which is the square mile that the school is located in, as well as the square mile to the west. Your option A3 would move ACP Erie and square miles GF, GG, and GH. This is what would be added to the option A2 would be GH. Then you have option A4, which would move ACP Erie and square mile GF, which would be the square mile, the only, the square mile that the school sits in. And that would be the only square mile that would move based on that option. So the first, first, first four options I just shared with you mainly directly focus in on the new school. The, the next options, which are in the, in Bs and in the Cs, so B1 really focuses in on moving square miles from Perry High School. So it would move square miles GH and GI from Perry to the Basha boundary. And then B2 would move square mile GH from the Perry boundary to the Basha boundary. So it'd be those two square miles that we're really looking at because GF and GG are also in the options of addressing the new school. And then finally, C1, which addresses reducing Hamilton, Hamilton's boundary and moving students to Chandler, to the Chandler boundary. This would move square miles CB, CC, and CD from the Hamilton boundaries to the Chandler boundaries. And you'll see it is in this Chandler Boulevard and Pecos Corder. And then finally, C2 was the option that I presented to you previously, which would move square miles CC and CD from Hamilton boundaries to Chandler boundaries. Before I get into the recommendations, again, I know that you've seen these, these, I've presented it to you, we presented it out into the community. The initial A through, A1 through A4 really is focusing on the new school and boundaries that will address moving students to the new school. B is, is helping to reduce Perry's boundaries and the enrollment of growth that is projected to be in, in Perry's boundary and moving those students over into Basha where there is room. And then finally, C, which would be moving Hamilton students from, into the Chandler boundaries to address the growth that we're seeing that would occur at Hamilton, in, in Hamilton's boundaries. So when we look at the high school boundary recommendations, administration is recommending, and there will be three recommendations to address all of this. The, the administration is recommending boundary option A2. Boundary option A2 moves Arizona College Prep Erie and square miles GF and GG from the Perry boundaries to the new high school. This would include all current 9th through 11th grade students at ACP Erie currently. Boundary changes would start with current eighth grade students. So for example, in the square miles GF and GG, it would start with this year's current eighth graders, and they would start at the new school next year as ninth graders. That would move in its first year, 131 students that are currently in the boundary, and by year four, it would move 400, over 400, about 426 students to the new school over the four year period. With that, we had three community meetings and we got feedback, whether it be by email or information at the meetings. Some key issues that came up in the community. One is looking from the left side and then we'll move to the right. So looking from the left side, some of the information we got back from our Arizona College Prep families, that some ACP families want school to continue as a small environment. ACP is currently at about 840, 50?
Eight hundred eighty-three.
I'm sorry?
Eight hundred eighty-three.
Eight eighty-three, so it's a little bigger than it was the last time we, we spoke. But they're looking, some would like to see it continue as a small school. Some ACP families want to keep the school in the current neighborhood and, and not move from its current location. A small portion of ACP teachers don't want to move to the new location, and families do not want to lose the ACP culture that has been developed over the years. That has been one of, one of the big things that has come from families is making sure not losing that culture. From neighborhood families, some of the feedback that we received is some families are not in favor of uniform requirements. Again, that is something that hasn't been determined, and Mr. Bickus is going to share a little bit of information with you as how he would go and start having meetings with families and, from the ACP as well as those families that live in the community so that they can start having the discussions and planning of what, what the new school and what the new planning would be. Some families are concerned with the ACP model of programming and the rigor of, of some of what courses that are offered and the expectation of how many AP classes or the rigorous classes that students would have to take. I think what's important to note is it is going to be a comprehensive high school and all the things that we offer at all of our schools is what our plan is to offer at this school as well. Initial community resistance to the location was one of the things that came up, and we've had meetings on that. Not sure students will fit in, in with the current school culture and established student body, being that we have a number of students that would be coming over, and they would start off small from the community and then grow. Some have shared concerns with the amount of homework that, that's currently at ACP. Mr. Bickus did share at many of the meetings that we had that the homework that is expected from students in AP and on level is similar to the homework that is expected from students that are in our other high schools, but I'll also let him share. And then finally, will the new school have special education programs? And yes, it will. As a, as a comprehensive high school program, we have to have all of, all of the amenities that our student, students need. With that, other information that came from the community is the excitement of additional course offerings, and this was from both ACP families and the community. Athletics facilities to offer the majority of athletics programs, which came from both. Neighborhood families, the high school is located in the neighborhood, and so there are families that are looking forward to walk. Full programming, and I think it's an important point because when you start a school and you have 9th through 12th, there's programming that is going to start right off compared to usually when you start off with either a ninth and a 10th grade class, you don't have that, that ability. Scholarship earnings that has been shown at ACP with the students, the success that has been there. Accessibility to administration was something that came up in regards to being able to connect with the administration that is currently at, at ACP. Facilities and the fine arts programming, so that we have a performing arts center, two gyms, the different fields that we have on, on the, on campus, the different activities that would be available. And then finally, the continued busing to the new school, because we currently have depots throughout the district that make sure that we have access to students who are looking to go into that program, and we would continue that to the new location. The second recommendation would be option B2. This would move square miles, mile GH from the Perry High School boundary to Basha. Boundary changes would start with current eighth graders, and they would start next year as ninth graders at Basha. This square, in this square mile, in the first In this square mile, in the first year, it's projected just to move 19 students and over four years, it's projected to move 71 students. I share that because I think it's important because that's the projection of what's there now because that is the square mile that is currently under construction on Val Vista and Chandler Heights. The projection is this square mile will produce 150 to 200 high school students over the next five years. But until the house is purchased and they're in, the projections are lower, but we know that that number is going to get bigger which is why I did not recommend it in the new school because then that was going to throw it off kilter in the sense of the numbers based on what we know that is going to be growth within that square mile. And finally, the recommendation of option C2 which would move square miles CC and CD from the Hamilton High School boundaries to the Chandler High School boundaries. Boundary changes would start with current 8th grade students and they would start at Chandler High next year as 9th graders. In its first year, that would move 146 students. Over four years, it would move 590 students. So it would be a move, moving some of the students from Hamilton to Chandler. I think what's important to note is we have growth in our secondary, we have growth in our high schools, but we know that there is decline that is going to come over time. Moving these boundaries now will help balance out over time, knowing that in the Chandler feeder, we're going to see a decrease in students. So moving this now will allow that growth to come as we also are going to see some declining over time. I think with the movement, with these options, it's going to give us more of a balance of moving students from one to the other. So what I'd like to talk about and touch base is some of the benefits to moving selected Perry boundaries and ACP Erie to the new high school. One, the fiscal responsibility by maximizing district resources is really important which is also one of our goals is to make sure that we're looking to the future and how we're spending our resources and what resources we have. Currently, as ACP Erie has been evolving and gaining in size as well as what they're doing in the arts and in sports, their current home field has been Anderson Junior High with playing most of their games at other high schools because it's difficult to play it at the junior high, they've been having to play a lot more of their games at the high school. So it was already in the plans to work on the Anderson Junior High fields and actually make it available so that they can play their games there. The bleachers were appropriate, the field would be appropriate, scoreboard, all the things that are needed as well as constructing a building on the ACP Erie campus to address some of the size, more science labs that they need, weight room, some of the other facilities. So by not moving, by moving ACP Erie to the new location, that's one of the savings that the district could have and not actually doing that construction, it would save $6 million. Having an established staff, we would have cost savings of not having to hire a whole new staff because the staff from ACP Erie would be moving to the new location. There would be some staff to hire, but it wouldn't be an entirely new staff. Growth is not in one location in the district and this option will allow growth in all areas. I think it's really important to understand that the growth is throughout the district. So there's not one location that you can just put the school and understand it's going to address all of the growth. Growth is throughout the district. Early on in CUSD when we were growing and we were putting schools in places to address the boundaries, we are now at the end of that growth and now we have to look at what is it going to be for the future where we're not going to have big pockets of growth in a location to put a school. Having this school put in this location and being smart, understanding that we're going to increase and then decrease some so that we don't have schools that are real big and don't have the students to actually be in it. ACP Erie can expand and offer its successful program to more students and again, this does not disrupt boundaries for all of our schools. It's an established school and staff that allows for full programming to start. I mentioned this before, if you start with a 9th through 12th, you can have the programming right off at the first day compared to if you have a 9th through 10th grade just starting. There's some programs you're not going to be able to offer, there's some things you're not going to be able to do. Moving ACP Erie will allow Oakland, ACP Oakland to move to the Erie campus to address growth. ACP Oakland will have athletic fields, facilities to move, they move to Erie currently. ACP Oakland has a gym, but they use Chandler High's fields, they use ACP Erie's field, they use other schools' fields because they don't have any currently on their campus. If ACP Oakland moves to Erie, the available site will be used to expand academic programming. An example that has come up has been first responder schools, but there's other things that could be looked at as to programming that we can do within our district. I think it's going to be heads coming together and seeing what's going to be the best thing for our district. The new wing at Chandler High School will give CHS increased capacity for students moving from Hamilton in the boundary recommendation that I shared in C2. And then reduces Perry High enrollment over time and it's not a quick blow to Perry, it's going to be overtime, the students in those square miles that we would be moving. When we look at the benefits to Perry High School and Hamilton's boundary moves, one for Perry students moving to Basha, the majority of the square mile as I mentioned in GH is under construction with new homes. It reduces Perry's enrollment and addresses future growth. Basha High has the capacity and I shared the capacity early on, Basha High has the capacity to accept students that would be coming from those boundaries and it keeps a healthy enrollment at Basha as we look at future decline over time. Benefits to moving Hamilton, boundaries to Chandler High School, balances enrollment between Hamilton and Chandler over time, reduces Hamilton enrollment to address growth. CHS has additional space as I mentioned with the new building and it shifts a large portion of students who currently reside close to Chandler High School to Chandler High. Hamilton's boundaries goes all the way to Chandler High School, so there are students that are right across the street from Chandler High School that are attending Hamilton whether it's being bused to the school or driving to the school, some of these students that would now make their boundary right across the street. So a lot of information, but I would like to turn over some time to Mr. Bickus because I think it's important to understand what is the ACP plan to develop relationships and engage students and families in moving ACP to the new school as well as engaging the community around the school. Mr. Bickus?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. If the governing board does approve the recommendation for ACP to move to the new high school site, one of the things that we want to focus on immediately is developing relationships. We take a lot of pride in the relationships that we have established at our current location and really working on becoming a family, a school community of members within a family. And we all know that in education, the most significant impact on students is the relationships that they have. We want to continue to focus on that. So the focus is going to be to develop a strong, warm, welcoming, positive relationship with our school community and welcome all students to our school. We want to make sure that the students know that we're here to assist them throughout their four years of high school and help them achieve any of their academic dreams that they have and to guide them to future career and college success. So the way we're going to do this is we have purposeful relationships that we want to develop. One of the programs that we have in place and we're really excited about is our Night Connection Program. We refer to this as KCP. It's a student mentor program and what we do with this program is we assign our upperclassmen to freshmen and new students in all grade levels to help them feel a part of the school community right from the start. We do this by assigning their mentors based on a student survey. So all of our freshmen and all of our new students will get a survey and they would fill out kind of what they would like to see in a mentor. And then we look at the mentors that we have and we align those mentors with the student. So right from the bat, they have somebody that has some commonalities with them, so they have some connections with that individual. And then what we do is we have activities during the course of the spring and unfortunately COVID took those away from us this year, but we had a barbecue planned last year and we're going to continue this year so that the mentors and the mentees can get to know each other before the start of the school year, towards the end of the school year and can make those connections over the summer and get any questions that they may have answered, that they may have answered by our upperclassmen. Our upperclassmen are invested in this program, they get trained in the program, they understand what their goal is to do as far as working with the mentees that they have. And then we're going to continue to have planned group gatherings. We have our night games which is an exciting night that is very popular with our students where they compete against one another. Our International Night Festival has received community awards and when we talk about the different cultures that we have on our campus and just trying to make sure that everyone realizes that we all have our unique qualities that we bring to the school and we want to celebrate those qualities. And then we have pancake breakfast and we have our Battle of the Classes. But also when we talk about relationships, we talk about an awareness of lens and focusing on that lens and helping our students understand that we only are aware of our own lens. We can assume and maybe guess what other people are thinking or feeling, but we truly don't know what they are thinking or feeling. And so we try to make sure that we take a chance to understand the lens of others and learn from others. We may not always agree, but if we can break down those barriers and try to understand more about one another, we can establish those relationships that help make our school community that strong family that we strive for every single year. We're also going to continue with a college career path for all of our students. The way we're going to do this is that we, first of all, we believe that all of our students can have a successful post-high school life. It's our job to help them get to where they want to be and to realize what their goals are, but for us to also realize that every student's path is different. We want to sit down and listen to the path that they want to take and help build a high school adventure that's going to help them accomplish that path. We have communicating, we communicate defined grade level college career paths to ensure that students are aware of and have a clear understanding of their personal goals. We do this every single year. And the way that we do this is we sit down with every student when it comes to registration. It's administration, it's counseling, it's our college and career specialist. We sit down and we talk about what are their goals, what do they want to try to achieve? And then we look at the schedule of classes that they should take to help them reach those goals. What we also talk about with the colleges, that they want to go to college, what should they look for as far as the courses that are taken, what should they be aware of? If they're taking a career path, we want to make sure that we're sitting up the classes that are going to help them meet those career goals that they want to achieve. And we're going to continue doing that. So we sit down one-on-one in these meetings and talk to every single student, every single spring about what they want to do during the rest of their high school career. And we'll continue to do that with the annual review of their E-CAP. We want to have strong academic supports for our students because we want every child to have the opportunity to do the best they possibly can. So we're going to continue to offer peer tutoring and encourage other students to become those peer tutors for one another. All teachers have defined office hours so students can go and meet with their instructor during defined office hours, but I do have to say that even though we have defined office hours, all of our teachers are available for our students when and if they need them. I talked about the development of the personal academic schedules based on the conversations and meetings with all students. And this is something, and I know I just talked about it, but it's something that's very much appreciated by our students and our community members because it shows that we want to take the time to understand the students and make sure that we're building a class schedule that really meets their needs. And then finally, we have open door access to our counselors, college and career specialists, and the administrative team. Students can come and meet with me at any time. We're going to continue that policy as we, if the board does approve for ACP to move to the new high school. My office will be open at any time for any member of the community, any student, any faculty member. It's part of that relationship piece that we think is so critical. And then of course, we have the vertical alignment of classes. Pending the governing board's decision, I've put together a communication plan that we want to implement to communicate with our new families and current families. So what we want to start with is meetings and general information meetings in November at the feeder schools and at ACP. I'm going to communicate those dates by Friday, October 23rd pending the board's decision where we can go ahead and start talking about the new school and what everyone wants to bring to that new school. Those meetings will also help generate the development of a site council and the purpose of this council is to gather feedback and input from the school community to assist in providing additional direction as future decisions are made. So those are going to be the initial meetings that we set up and we'll continue that with through the course of December. And then we'll also open our campus to tours to any interested families that want to see ACP. January and February, we'll continue the site council meetings. We'll make sure that we start talking in January with the one-to-one meetings like I referenced earlier with students to review their course selection and their registration. And then in March, that's the goal, in March is to have the finalization of all agreed-upon school norms, whatever those may be, based on the community meetings that we have. And then we're going to go ahead and start the mentor program in April and begin getting the surveys out there to the new students so we can make sure that we set up them up with a mentor that meets their needs to the best of our ability. And then May is when we plan to have our KCP barbecue and then we'll be getting all of our summer newsletters out and then we'll start the new school year with a family pool party and just having the opportunity to have our families get to know the school by having, opening the school for a tour so everyone can see the new campus and see the new environment and be welcome to be a part of ACP and the Knight family.
So with that, I want to end before we go into questions and really look at the goals that we established to determine the boundary, the boundary options. Again, establish long-term boundary adjustments for all schools, for all high schools. Again, we're at the end of our growth and it's going to be real important that we establish what does this look like in moving forward so that we can balance maximize existing resources, relieve the increased projected enrollment in Hamilton Perry High Schools and I think the recommendations do this. Develop the new 9th through 12th grade high school boundaries to keep their enrollment between 1,500 and 2,000. I believe the recommendations do this. Ensure the least amount of disruption for students and families. I think that looking at the, just moving two square miles from Hamilton and the three square miles from Perry because that's really what it ends up being when you look at where you're moving students from and then moving ACP Erie will reduce the disruption to the number of square miles within the district. I think also broadening ACP Erie's model of success has been a very successful school and I think bringing this success to many students in our district, I think is a viable option. With that said, I would like to open up for questions for myself as well as Mr. Bickus as we also have two teachers here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Thank you, Mr. Bickus. I appreciate all of the great information that you went over for our new high school. I guess I will open it up to any questions. Why don't we start, Mr. Evans, are you still there? Well, maybe we lost him. I wanted to give him a minute because sometimes it takes a little bit for him to get off mute. Do any of the other board members have any questions? Ms. Love?
Thank you so much for the presentation. So there's a lot of feedback from the community in terms of culture and you know, there are, like I think, sorry, trying to read this, but the ACP families don't want to lose the culture that they've developed and it sounds like the neighborhood families are concerned about the school culture and established student body and maybe not feeling like they fit in. What is the sense of like what the, like if you had to describe what the ACP culture is, what is that?
Like I said, I really, what we strive to maintain at ACP is a sense of family. And I know that's a broad term in defining culture, but when you think of family, you think of caring of one another, you think of having each other's back, you think of supporting one another, you think of, you know, you may not always agree or see eye to eye, but in the end, you care about one another. And that's what we really want to have our students understand. And I think you see it, well, I don't think, I know you see it. And we've had people come to our campus and say, I've never seen kids treat each other like the kids do. And it's just the compassion and care and concern. I don't know if you all want to add anything to that?
Before they do, I think one of the things and it's one of those things where you don't know until you see it and sometimes I think there's a misconception of that. One of the things that I think is a concern that has come up has to do with the rigor of courses of what students are taking and it seems that that is the only focus, but if you're on ACP Erie's campus, you'll see the activities and the camaraderie and the different things that are happening on campus that you would see on other campuses. And I think that is some of the concern of, you know, the academic piece of it, the academic rigor. And I think it's important to note that not only do you have accelerated classes on campus, there's also on-level classes on campus and I think that's some of the concern that I've heard.
I know this might be like a bit premature, but is there, when we're talking about like having these meetings, which I really am pleased with the... having these meetings, which I really am pleased with the really thought-out plan in terms of building that rapport with the community on both sides. But if there's a question of rigor, is there a sample curriculum or a sample, like, what am I trying to say, course catalog? And I know that may be way premature because we haven't, we just got walls. But, like, is there something that we can bring to the community to kind of let them know what the course catalog and what the course options are?
I can, I can actually answer that. The course catalog for ACP Erie is the district course catalog. So, it really comes down to what courses are offered based on what courses students want. So, if we have a number of students that are taking calculus, then those are the courses that are offered based on the number of students. But we also have students that are in, it could be on-level math. So, when we have students enroll, those are the courses that are usually offered, is the courses within the district course catalog based on what the students need. So, when we, we can, no problem, get into, here's, here's the course catalog at the community, here are the courses that are going to be offered because of the students that we have and what their needs are. So, with that, that's something simple that we can do because the course catalog is the district course catalog.
Yeah, I think just like bringing that to some of the discussion so that the families can see like what their options are, especially if you have families who are intimidated by the ACP model and don't really know a whole lot about what this new school is looking like, it just kind of opens up that transparency.
Yeah, I think the meetings that Mr. Bickus has prepared is going to help with that because one of the things that they focus on is what is the, and we have an E-CAP and Education Correction Plan within all of our schools that we're required to do. That helps students to see what are their courses that they're looking to take. And it also helps the schools to know what courses that they're looking to take early on so they can start planning their master schedule for that. So, in those meetings with parents, they can discuss the courses that are offered, the courses that are in a course catalog, and what does that mean for students on campus.
Okay. And then, I know there was some mention too about, like, the, some families want the the uniform requirement, some families don't, and they don't know what that means. Can you speak a little bit more to that in terms of, like, the uniform issue and?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. So, when I started this back in 2007, I started with community meetings. And at that time, the individuals that were interested in the school wanted to have uniforms. When we moved in 2012, we had community meetings, and then the families continued to want to have uniforms. So, I plan on, if the board approves, on the meetings, coming in and talking about what do they want. Currently, the uniforms that we have at ACP include a polo shirt. That's pretty much what they have to wear Monday through Thursday. And then, they have whatever bottoms they want to wear, whether it be jeans or khakis or shorts or whatnot. So, it's just a matter of sharing with the community is what we currently have and then sitting back and listening to, okay, what ideas do you have? What do you want to see the new school look like? And it's going to be using that feedback to have the site council sit down and determine what the structure of the new school is going to be when it comes to the code that is established.
And I really like this awareness of lens thing. Sounds kind of like equity, but I really like that. And, you know, I really, the plan in terms of engaging the community, I can't really say anything more about it. It's just great. I really like this night connection program. Can you tell me how are the student mentors chosen?
Sure. Well, the first thing that we do is ask the students who are interested because we want them to have buy-in to the community, to the, to the program. So, we actually ask them if they're interested. And then, once we have the students that are interested, we'll have a meeting with all of them, and we talk about the goals of the program, the expectations of the mentors, and then, we have them do an agreement that they're going to follow the rules and standards that we have to help. Because in the end, it's about helping kids, and that's all I want to do is just help kids. And so, they have to agree to attend the meetings, they have to agree to, you know, communicate with their mentors. We did do the program this year, we did it virtually, however. So, our mentors had a virtual kickoff meeting with all of our new students. And then, in that meeting, they also shared their contact information so their mentors could go ahead and contact them. We have received quite a few emails, kind of surprised how the mentor program is working so well in a virtual environment because the kids are reaching out to their mentors right now and talking about, you know, what's going on in the class. So, that's how, that's how they're selected. But they're invested in it because I want the kids to truly want to be a mentor and not just put it on the resume.
All of it sounds really good. I'm just kind of thinking too about, like, what are some potential hiccups along the way that we might need to account for? But it's one of those things that you don't really know until you encounter it. So, I mean, on paper, it sounds really good right now. So, yeah, I don't really have anything else to offer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Mrs. Brunner?
I was wondering if we might be able to hear from the other two staff members if they had anything else to add?
One thing, sorry, introduce myself. Coach Blueford, I'm the head football coach, also teach marketing and a part, head of the DECO organization on our campus.
Could you speak closer, get the phone a little closer? It's kind of hard to hear. Thank you.
One thing I would say, you know, in regards to, you know, including the community and kind of the concern of whether or not the culture at ACP will match the culture in that community. We're kind of at the beginning phase of our culture. Previous to last year, we had junior high on our campus, you know, we had eighth grade, and then, the previous year, we had seventh. So, last year, really being our first time as a high school, we were, we're exploring all of the things that usually come with high schools. We're trying to search and find what our culture is, and I think we were very successful. And I think our high school student body wanted more. They wanted to be more involved with the people around them, they wanted to do more. We've had discussions about, you know, community involvement and kind of defaulting to some of the standard things like feed my starving children because we don't really have a community to support. And that's something that our student body has conveyed is that they want to be a part of something bigger now that the junior high aspect is not attached to us. So, in regards to, you know, making sure that we're including our community in our culture, they're going to be helping develop it because we're still in that infancy stage as a high school to try to figure out what we want to be. And so, it's exciting as, you know, someone who's involved in two major programs on our campus to have that ability to involve the people around us, to support them and be of service to them and vice versa. So, to speak to that, you know, I think that's a major point to make that when we're going out and reaching out to this community, that they're going to be helping develop this, that this is not necessarily an established culture that we're going to be projecting onto them.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trish Scaff, and I have been teaching since we moved to this campus that ACP is located at. I coach the Spirit Line, and I teach English, and I run our tutor club. So, I guess what I would add is I know I have been deeply touched by some of the misconceptions that ACP has experienced in that people think it's this rigorous, scary program. And the group of freshmen I first started teaching who graduated in 2016 was our second class that had students who decided to either go into the military or go a different path than college. And that's one of the misconceptions is that you have to go in here, you have to take all these AP classes, you have to stress yourself out. And it was really hard to change our student and our parents' mind to understand that you could take an on-level English class and still go to college with a scholarship. And it's been something we've been working on, I want to say, since, like, I think since the 2016 group where we realized that was some of the issues that they were not understanding. So, I had to warn students when they were new to our campus. Our kids are very friendly, and they want you to be involved. And they tend to be overpowering sometimes in their need to be friendly. So, when the community talks about worrying about fitting in, what I think they're saying is we're afraid that we are going to be able to compete with these kids. And I'm looking at children who came in, and they were C-level students in junior high or not successful in junior high, who are graduating with full scholarships from our school because of the relationships that we built with them, because we pushed them and we were invested in them and we talked with them. In our English curriculum, we speak with them about college and career and their opportunities beyond, and we prepare them for the things that they need to do. So, one of my English teachers said, "Well, why are you teaching narrative at senior level?" And I said, "Because my on-level English kids in senior level are going to college, some of them, and they need to be able to write a scholarship essay or an application essay. They might be taking stats, they might be taking regular government." I don't, that's not important to me. What's important is that they go out and be the best person they can be. They're going to have to go out and interview for jobs, and having that narrative skillset is necessary for them to explain why they're a best fit for that opportunity. So, in our conversation within our English department, we're building a four-year plan with our college and career specialist of things that we can do. For instance, when our freshmen come back, they need to do a research project to find out what clubs or sports or activities are beneficial to their interests because the number one thing that gets them involved in school is also the things that help their academics and helps their future. So, those are conversations I know we have as a staff that we then take into the classroom with the students. And it's what makes us a little bit different. And it is partially because we have the smaller group. And I know that when parents talk about not wanting to lose those opportunities, they don't want to lose those relationships and those connections that we create with our
Thank you. Mrs. Brunner?
Thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing your perspective on the school. And I wanted to thank everyone who's been part of the process. Obviously, this has been extended a bit more than we thought it would be. And there were a lot of parents who came to the parent nights. And I think everyone is well-informed of the perspectives on both sides of the current ACP folks and the people who could possibly become part of the ACP community. So, I just want to thank you for all that work because that was a lot to pull together all the comments and events that happened around that. And, let's see, I just want to make sure I don't forget my questions here. I did feel like I needed a little more information, and I don't know if it's that my memory is hazy from January, but I thought before we had some more data on how many students we kind of project in each of the square miles. And then, to see what that would do with the different options that are listed so that we have an idea. Because some of those pockets, a couple of those square miles are being developed right now, like around Rice and, you know, those different areas. And like you said, you've marked off the ones where there really aren't high school students because they're plus 55 communities. But I guess I, it would be helpful for me to...
Do you want to go back to the recommending, the initial boundary pieces? Is that what you're...
So, yeah, like, these different options that we have for ACP Erie. What, like, oops, if we look at what ACP has right now, I don't know what we're adding on with each of those squares.
Sure.
And I think we had that prior, back in January possibly, so that I can get a better picture of, and maybe even down the road too, like, five years from now. And I'm not sure how far down we can go and still have pretty good reliability with our projections, but as much as we can, obviously, we want to look long-term, right?
Definitely. So, for example, in option A2, which is, which is square miles GF and GG, in the first year, 131 students would move from the two square miles. By year four, you'd have 426 students that would be coming from those two square miles. When you look at option A3, this is moving square miles GF, GG, and GH with the reminder that GH is the one that's under construction, that's at Val Vista and Chandler Heights that is projected to have 150 to 200 high school students coming out of that square mile. So, when you look at, so that's why it's important, it's important to note GH because in these three square miles, in the first year, you're looking at 150. In year four, you're looking at 497 with the understanding that with GH, there's another projection on top of that of 150 to possibly 200 students. Then, when you look at A4, which is just moving the square mile that the new school sits in, which is GF, in the first year, it would move 86 students. And by year four, it would move 272 students.
And did you say A1? I'm sorry if I missed what that number would be.
In A1, in A1, this would, so I'll go through what it would move. So, I think that's the, it would move FE, FF, FGF, GG, GH, and GI from Perry boundaries. It moves square miles HD, ID from Hamilton to the Basha boundaries. It moves square miles DD, ED from Hamilton boundaries to the Perry boundaries. And it moves square mile CD from Hamilton boundaries to Chandler. But when we look at what does it do for the new school with these moves, in the first year, it would move, sorry, in the first year, it would move 327. And by year four, it would be 1,084 coming from those square miles that would move to the new school.
And the enrollment this year, Mr. Bickus, is about 900, 800?
It's close, we're 883.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, I was wondering if anyone has done the calculations on the transportation costs for the different models? So, I realize if we move ACP Erie there, it's going to be a mixed bag because some people may already live close to there, and other people are going to now not be able to walk to ACP Erie or whatever, you know? So, discounting that, assuming we're going to have to bus most of the ACP kids that are currently at the location now, I guess I'm just wondering what, what the transportation cost would be with the A1, A2, A3 models? Have we, has anyone calculated that?
I do not have that information. I do have to work with, with Mrs. Berry on that. I don't have those calculations for you today.
And then, the school facility board projections for the new site, what is their max capacity number? And then, I think that's all for the logistics part that I had. And my other question was, I was just curious how all the staff members, including Mr. Bickus, felt that, let's say, since the building could possibly hold 3,000 kids, at what point do you think the culture wouldn't be sustainable or would size not matter? Are you able to have a large mentor program? Are you able to have a larger version of what you're already doing without impacting the integrity of the program?
I'm going to say yes, and I know that may be a bold statement, but the reason I'm saying yes is in 2007, I started with 80 kids. Okay, 883, and we're maintaining the culture that we established, and we're maintaining the personnel, the personalization that we've established. That's my goal. I want every kid to know that we are there for them, whether it's 80 kids or 3,000 kids.
And did you guys have anything else to add or?
Yeah, I would just agree. I think the objective of our administration and our staff is service and doing whatever we need. So, I think with the numbers increasing, as long as our motive is continuously to develop this culture and keep this culture, could, obviously with numbers, and it could become more difficult and the more hurdles, but as long as our objective and the mentality that, you know, our leader, Mr. Bickus, has is to continue that, I think we continue to press forward and do our best to maintain that. So, I do think it's achievable because we'll have staff members that are willing to address those hurdles to make sure that we can, we maintain it.
And one of the things to think about that is the kids buy into it, the kids want it, and the kids are the ones who drive it. They're the ones who come to us and point out obstacles. So, even if we're gone, those kids will have built that tradition, and they're the ones pushing it on and saying, "Hey, we need this every year, let's solve this, let's find the teacher who's going to help us out, let's go find the admin." I think that if Mr. Bickus were to retire and you were searching for a new principal, that would be their demand as a student.
Thank you. And lastly, I was wondering if you had brainstormed any ideas on how to make the eighth graders in the new zone, whatever that zone may be? whatever that zone may be, that's not decided yet, how we could possibly reach out to them and include them and make them feel like they're a part of it? That has been, I don't think it's just the academic element, although I think because in the name it says college prep, I think it gives this implication that you must be college-bound to go there. But we've gotten quite a few comments, and when we were at the events too, that some people have concerns that, you know, just that they may not fit into the culture, like they're already a clique or something like that. And so could we possibly extend the mentorship program to second semester eighth graders, like through Zoom or Google Meet or something? I mean, I'm just rainstorming, but have you thought of some different ways to maybe get that community that's in that pocket, whatever we decide that pocket is?
Sure, that's what we do currently. The mentor program is for the incoming eighth graders. So they're incoming freshmen. We've reached out to them their eighth grade years when we start talking to them. And it is the second semester that it happens. In fact, Coach Blueford and I were having a conversation today about depending on what the governing board chooses, we're going to have to hit the ground running and go to their feeder schools and talk to Ryan, talk to Conley, talk to Payne, talk to Santan, and let them know how excited we are to welcome them to our school and what we are going to be providing them and helping them to have the best high school eventually possibly they can have. And so, yes, the mentor program begins in the spring. Administration and counseling and our college and career specialists will actually go to each site. And we'll meet one-on-one with each of the eighth graders at Payne and Santan that are designated for the school and start the process right then from January. And then we'll continue the communication and assign them to the mentor and welcome them to the school.
And I was just thinking, as you were saying that, as kids, word spreads, of course, kids talk to kids and they're gonna, they're like, oh, you're going there and why? You know, and then it catches on. So have we considered that there may be more open enrollment kids in that pocket? Is that included in your numbers?
No.
Okay.
No, other than we know that within CUSD, it's pretty consistent that we have about 30% of our secondary students that open enroll.
Yeah.
So we know that is a possibility. What that's going to look like, and you're exactly right. Every time we open a school, you'll hear, I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going. All of a sudden, you're going and the flood comes in. The same thing happened when I was a principal at Payne and we opened and only 200 eighth graders said they were coming and ended up being four something. And so it just depends.
I'm just thinking that maybe because that's a more densely populated area than where it is now, you're going to get more open enrolled kids that won't be in that zone coming in and that maybe that will influence the numbers as well. Thank you very much.
I would agree with that, which is, and I will say, which is why my recommendation was what, the recommendation I made is knowing that that's a possibility and then the school would end up being big write-off instead of being able to grow slowly.
Thank you, Mrs. Brunner. Mr. Evans, are you with us again? Okay, then I'll have a few questions. I know that ACP Erie has successfully moved once before from a tiny little rented church facility with 80 kids into the facility on the Erie campus. And you expanded from 80 kids to 883 kids today. That is, I think, absolutely amazing. You guys have been around the block on this and have figured out how to keep kids engaged and as part of the ACP Erie family with that tremendous growth. I mean, that's absolutely amazing. I truly believe that as a family, you will be able to continue to engage and make all of our new students that are coming to this school feel good, feel comfortable, and feel as though they are part of a community too. Your staff are part of the ACP Erie, or it'll be just ACP because it won't be Erie anymore. But I think that you've proven that success already. I assume that, and I guess this is kind of a detailed question, as we begin with this year's current eighth graders so that we would have an increased ninth grade class size if you move to the new facility, would we be taking in new students in grades 10 through 12 during that time? And how many?
We could, and it would be open enrollment because the students that would be moving would be the, if a board approves, would be the current nine through 11th graders that are at ACP Erie now. And it would be the eighth graders that currently live in those square miles. But you could have, if the board approves, usually you don't have open enrollments that can be all the way up until 12th grade because usually a new school may just open with nine and 10. So it does give the flexibility that there could be open enrollment in additional grades.
Okay. Now, could you also talk a little bit about how we grandfather students in who have had boundary changes?
So with the current students that are living in whichever square miles that the board approves, those students that are in nine through 12th grade currently would stay at their current school. They are grandfathered into that school, which means the transportation that they've had, they will continue to have. And the current ninth graders will move through their high school career at Hamilton or at Perry, still being, that being their home school and transporting all the way until they graduate. It's the students that are in current eighth grade that would be then now boundary to the new school and they wouldn't have transportation to Perry or they wouldn't have transportation to Hamilton anymore. Their new school would be those square miles.
And so basically, we continue to provide bus transportation for those students for an additional three years till they finish at the high school that they're currently at?
That is correct.
Okay. So we would be estimating that we would probably open, if we did decide to move ACP over to the new high school, we're probably looking at maybe 1,100, 1,200 students for the first year? Is that probably a good guess if all moved over and we got the extra?
I'd say that's a fair, a fair number.
Okay. I also wanted to comment, oh, the other question is, will we be having any CTE-type classes at the new high school?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we currently have CTE that is at ACP Erie now. And we would expand that program as we look at a college and career prep.
Will there also be any, I guess, EBIT students that, or do we currently have any?
We currently have EBIT students.
Okay. So when people start thinking that this is just a college prep-type curriculum, as we're doing these CTE classes, we are also looking at career training for these individuals.
Correct.
As a, and I think that might be something to certainly promote within the community, that we do have a place for all interests. And I guess the last comment I have is, you know, as we bring in these eighth graders into the school as freshmen, they are all new students, every one of them. None of them have ever attended high school before. And I see that that is a real good opportunity to make sure everybody is inclusive or is included in the culture of the school. I think with the idea that, oh, it's an established school, the ninth grade class that will be coming in isn't really established yet. They have their own history to make, shall we say. And they have their own friendships and socialization that they will create that's unique to their class. They will have strengths and do amazing things. And I think that it kind of does a disservice to say that, you know, with all these new students coming in, that there's going to be, I guess, established groups that don't want to interact or don't want to get involved. So I think that I look at it as a really great opportunity for all the students that are coming in as eighth graders to really make their mark on the school and get that personalized attention and get that training that they need for their career and for college readiness. So I think that you guys are doing a great job with those students. It's been a lot of fun watching the first graduation of, I think there were six kids at the Erie campus. And last year, there were quite a number. So you guys have really been around the block with the growth. So, and I think you've done a great job, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, did you have some questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to all, I was able to hear the entire presentation and some of the two of your answers. Kind of wanted to go there a little bit more with Mr. Bickus. One of the things that was said was that there isn't necessarily the push that every single student will go to college or is expected to go to college. But at the same time, I know in speaking with you and visiting some of the students on your campus that you have an extremely high expectation for those students. And I think you build that right in the very, very beginning. So as eighth graders come into ninth grade, that tradition will stick? Can you, and one of the things we haven't talked about is all of the many awards that your campus has been granted because of the high expectations that you bring in. But at the same time, there is that community and it's very interesting to me that there is such a tight community because you have students that come from all over the district. Can you just talk a little bit about how you, and I know you did already, but how you create that level of really camaraderie from kids that come from all over the district? And that level of expectation that you bring? And then I have another question following that because of that level of expectation that's there.
Sure. The mantra or the logo for ACP is strive for the impossible and be extraordinary. And I spend times with, at the beginning of the school year and obviously the second quarter, I will go into every classroom, every English classroom, and I will talk to the students about why we strive for the impossible, be extraordinary. We just want the students to know that, yes, there's going to be hiccups along the way and we expect that and we want that because that's how we learn and that's how we grow. But we just want everyone to put their best foot forward. And so we won't, we will work with kids to help them get to the level that we know they can get to. And it may mean that a student may have to turn a paper in three or four times until we get it to where they, we know they can be. You know, I know Ms. Scaff often will teach one period differently than the other period because that's what the students need. So I think understanding the needs of the students and really getting to know the students helps us to elevate the expectations because we know what the kids can do. And we want to work with them to help them achieve that highest level that they can achieve. So it goes back to the relationship piece. It goes back to knowing who the kids are. And it's knowing how to push the kids to the point where we get the best product possible from them, that they also understand what they can accomplish as an individual.
Wow, thank you. I want to go back to school. And then the follow-up to that would be, and thank you for the answer, but the follow-up would be that even within your, when there's guidance to help you examine who you can potentially be, there's pressure that comes with that too. And it could be internal pressure, it could be your peers if you're a student. But how do you, how have you had to change the way you address students' mental health and social-emotional issues as you've scaled? And then, you know, we're talking about a whole nother level of scaling again. And yeah, you guys are flexible. You've done it. I'm smiling. You've done it multiple times before. But how do you see incorporating that and gathering the resources you need to be able to help students continue that strive for the impossible and be extraordinary?
You know, it's a team approach. It really is. I mean, it's not, it starts with administration, starts with the classified staff, certified staff, my social worker, college and career. It's all of us working together and being aware and getting a pulse on our campus. We do surveys quite often to kind of gauge the level of stress that our kids are feeling, if they are feeling any stress. And we work on targeting what those specific stressors may be. And then we have discussions as a staff or, and meetings as a staff as how can we work to better what the product we're delivering for the students? We talk as a staff that we just want to be better tomorrow than we were today. So we just, we, and maybe you guys can answer to this as well, but it's just, it's a total team approach. And then, because every year is different, what may have been a trigger for one group one year is no longer, it's moot. And so we got to figure out what is it this year and then work to provide the resources to help the students with whatever stressors they may be encountering in their lives. And it also means providing groups, opportunities for kids to meet and work together. So whether that be, you know, a mindfulness group or bringing in a therapy dog that we have had come on our campus to help with whatever's going on. We just want to, we just want to do what we can to help kids. I mean, that's the bottom line. There's not a magical potion or anything out there. It's just really just trying to get to know who they are and making sure that we're meeting the needs based on whatever things come our way.
Thank you. And did either of you, Ms. Scaff looks like, give me that mic.
So my children are about the same age as some of the kids that I've taught. And it was really interesting to come in and see their experience as their teacher and then go home and hear my kids' experience. And one of the things I can say is it's always at the forefront of our staff. The beginning of the year is always about, who are these kids? And not like as a group, but who is that kid over there? What do you know about this child? And we build that within our first interviewing, who we hire. I mean, you have to believe in that mission and that vision, that you are there for the individual child. And we don't, we try not to hire people that aren't there for that mission. And so I know as a staff, we go and talk to each other. Hey, you know, I got this kid in my class and something's not right, but I don't know them very well. Do you know them very well? And we start sharing our own resources of what we know about kids. And it's a deliberate effort and it's something that is pushed from our leadership team and our admin. And then it's brought through for other staff members because we hold each other accountable. It's not okay for you to not know that kid sitting in the back of your English class or your math class. You need to know who they are, what they do outside of the classroom, and you need to be able to speak to them about it. And I know that sounds very kind of rainbow. But sometimes it means that you don't get through what you wanted to get through that day. And that's okay. And it has been since I started working here. There were plenty of times where I was like, well, we're not teaching that lesson today. Let's find out what's really going on and let's pivot and spin into a different skill set but still meet your emotional need at the time because kids aren't the same every day. And so we have a very proactive staff, but we also have a very reactive staff that is fine going, I'm going to stop and do something different because that's what a kid needs right now. So I would say it starts with admin, but it also goes into the teachers holding each other accountable. We don't like it when a kid is left behind.
I'd speak to the first point that you made about expectations and kind of maintaining that as we continue to grow. I could speak to my own experience from, you know, starting a football program at a school that is at that point primarily, you know, academic-focused and kids not really going there to play football. It's a change of mentality. And one of my biggest things with being, you know, a former recruiter at college and going to a college prep was exposing them to the opportunity that they can also go to a really high academic school and continue to play sports. And as this evolution, the next, over the three years, we've had, you know, this year, we have, you know, five players that have over 60 opportunities to go play. And that was an expectation that was set at the very beginning of the program and having to develop that, you know, with a different mentality than they had initially. So I think setting those expectations, both as a school and academically and athletics and clubs and everything that we do, as we expand, I think that's kind of part of what we've developed as a culture is when we do get these incoming freshmen or new students into our school, we set those expectations, give them the resources and support them so that maybe they're not as confident academically in a particular class or subject. so that maybe they, they're not as confident academically in a particular class or subject. I think as a staff, we do a really good job of not downgrading our expectations but helping them meet those and realize what they can actually accomplish. And I think, you know, from the DECA and marketing standpoint and some of the things that have started once we were primarily a high school, you can kind of see that. You can see that they, we've maintained our expectations academically as we've grown in other areas and they've superseded and continued to grow. So I think as we add or have the potential to go into a bigger school and add more programs, those same expectations are going to be set, and I think kids are going to want to, want to meet those because we have the support to do it.
Thank you.
And if I could just add, you know, there's never a time that a kid comes to my office that I can't find a teacher on our campus that has a connection with that child somehow for me to get additional information to help the individual. So it's, it goes back to the connection piece.
I do have one other question, and I guess this is for Mr. Locke. Have we had any additional questions that have come in during the study session from the public?
Not during the study session. We've received four feedback over the course of four or five days, two of which today. Kind of the general consensus is they like their school, they like the smallness and feel like it leads to their child's success. And just to summarize a couple of them, one is from a parent that brags about the school and says it's being a perfect fit for his son, says that if ACP is moved to a larger campus, it loses most of its appeal for my son due to larger student body, likely loss of school uniforms, possibly. Addition of students not enrolling for the traditional school model that is more disciplined and academically focused. My son already decided if ACP moves next year, he will not be attending for his junior year. He does not feel there will be a reason to drive further to a new campus with a bigger ACP when it's mostly the same model that he would get close by at Hamilton. That's one feedback. Another one on the same lines came in today. Let me change over here. You have all these in near entirety as you're studying for the next couple of weeks, next few weeks. Another parent, while we agree that ACP should have adequate sports facilities, larger locker rooms and space to grow, many families chose ACP because of its small campus. All of the students know each other, creating a close-knit school community. We also love that the students wear uniforms, which prevents drama and fighting, creating a safer environment for all students. If ACP moves to the new high school, while continuing the uniform policy, entrance requirements and rigorous academic expectations, we support that move. However, if this means, this move means that integrity of ACP will be compromised, then we respectfully request that ACP remain at its current location. You kind of get the gist of those.
Thank you.
Mrs., Rob, do you remember how many kids were there the first year?
In 2007? Eighty. I had 57th graders and 38th graders.
At ACP Erie?
Oh, ACP.
When we moved, when we finally got you over there?
Oh, grade seven through 12, I want to say we were about 320, maybe?
That's what I'm kind of, I think it was under 400 because I remember meeting in the church with, you had a couple hundred people there that wanted their own campus. And it's interesting because when you think we were over there at 300, we're not there at 800 and they still think they're a small school. I don't think, you know, it's grown so seamlessly, I don't think they realize how it has really expanded to the CTE and the athletics and, it's just fascinating. So I, I think some people still think of it back because it was branded so beautifully back in the day.
And Mrs. Brunner, we'll have one last question. This is on the agenda later also in information items, so if we do have, think of any other questions, we can have, ask those then, but Mrs. Brunner?
I just wanted to ask if we were going to hear from Chandler High and Hamilton on their opinions on the segment that relates to them as well at some point?
In regards to feedback?
With the projections, you know, how comfortable do they feel with that shift and how that would play out at their campus?
We can definitely have them in in the next meeting. The conversations that I've had in talking with, with both sites were, had no concerns with the shifts that were occurring in the sense of enrollment as well as the feedback from the community. The majority of the feedback was from our ACP families or the neighbors of the new school, but I can definitely get more information. But my conversation has been with both administrations, no problem with the movement that's been, been recommended.
Sounds good. So we will, thank you, Dr. Gilbert, thank you, ACP Erie staff and administration. We appreciate you coming out this evening and giving us some of your insights as to how all this, all the move would, would happen, so, and what you would be doing to continue the, the great environment that ACP Erie currently has. So thank you so much for, for explaining all those things to us this evening. We will now take a short break and we will commence our, our regular board meeting in just a few minutes.